And Councilman McCrone give us our play.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we love you. We praise your name today. We thank you so much for your goodness and your mercy. And we continue to beg your leadership for our mayor and city council as we move on to serve this wonderful city. We pray for wisdom and protection and guidance in all that we do. We thank you, Father, for men and women that are willing to serve this community. And we pray, God, that you would hedge about their families all of our lives. We pray you please protect our city. In these days, we beg in Jesus' name.
I understand the pledge. A pledge which is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Clerk, when you call the rule.
Mayor Clinton.
Present.
Peter Thomas.
Here.
David Treger.
Here.
Councilor Korn.
Here.
Councilor Hudson.
Here.
Councilor Robertson.
Present.
Councilor Cat.
Here.
Councilor Puddin.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Willis.
Here.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
Well, we have a call present. Here, no bid over this. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This stuff. Here, no old businesses, so we're gonna go down to new business.
Mayor, make a motion that we read 01 through 09 by Tyone.
Motion in a second.
Second.
So moved.
Everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Shall we not read 07 since we tabled it?
Well, we'll get down to it.
All righty. An ordinance granting an additional six-month moratorium on the enforcement of Chapter 5.40 Solicitors, Chapter 5.42 Solicitors in Private Residential Areas, and Chapter 6.48 Peddling and Soliciting on Private Residences of the West Memphis Municipal Code, making various findings and provisions related to the subject, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Mayor, if I may, make a motion that we suspend the title and read.
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? City Attorney?
An ordinance granting an additional six-month moratorium on the enforcement of Chapter 5.40 Solicitors, Chapter 5.42 Solicitors in Private Residential Areas, and Chapter 6.48 Peddling and Soliciting on Private Residences of the West Memphis Municipal Code, making various findings and provisions related to the subject, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Suspend the rule.
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? City Attorney?
An ordinance granting an additional six-month moratorium on the enforcement of Chapter 5.40 Solicitors, Chapter 5.42 Solicitors in Private Residential Areas, and Chapter 6.48 Peddling and Soliciting on Private Residences of the West Memphis Municipal Code, making various findings and provisions related to the subject, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion.
Can, City Attorney, can you just give a quick briefing of what we're talking about?
Sure. This moratorium has been in effect for approximately two years. There's ongoing litigation, which the municipal league has advised us as a body to continue with the moratorium until we know the results of the litigation to keep us from being sued.
Any other discussion? Call for a vote on the papers?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Clerk, can you give me a number for that ordinance?
2491.
We need to adopt the emergency clause.
Mayor, make a motion that we adopt the emergency clause, section?
Three.
Five.
So moved.
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The emergency clause is passed. 02, City Attorney?
All right. An ordinance calling for a special election in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, to fill a vacancy on the city council for Ward 4, Position 2, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency.
Do you want to read that out?
Yeah, we didn't read that.
Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules, place it on a second reading.
On the favor?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance calling for a special election in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, to fill a vacancy on the city council for Ward 4, Position 2, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency.
Can I get a motion to suspend the rules depending on three? Third reading?
So moved.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance calling for a special election in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, to fill a vacancy on the city council for Ward 4, Position 2, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency.
Motion in a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion? Well, that's pretty much my old seat, so we got to fill that seat and give Ms. Robertson some more representation in Ward 4. On the paper?
I just have a portion.
Go ahead.
Are y'all gonna put this in the paper so the people will know?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it's required to be published. What'll happen after, if it's passed, is we will get it to the county clerk, and the election commission actually makes the publication.
Yeah, do it. Let me get a vote. On the paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Let me get a, also, let me suspend the rules, not suspend the rules, I wanna...
We'll get a number first and then make the emergency clause.
You want a number? Okay.
Order is number 2492.
Now, the emergency clause is section 10.
Let me get a motion in a second.
So moved.
On the paper, aye? For the emergency clause.
Yeah, I make a second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right.
Three?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying, ground spraying, and other mosquito control efforts and for other purposes.
Well, if I may, probably should've done this in December, so I'd like to ask that we waive the rules, place it on a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying, ground spraying, and other mosquito control efforts and for other purposes.
Can I get another motion to suspend the rules and place it on its own?
So moved.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying, ground spraying, and other mosquito control efforts and for other purposes.
Motion in a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion? On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Ms. City Clerk, can you get another number?
Order is number 2493.
City Attorney, 04?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the professional consulting services in regulatory and other matters to be provided by David Wilson and for other purposes.
Mayor, I'm not sure, and I don't know if Todd needs to answer this question. Is that something that we need to handle today, or is that something that can be read out?
I don't think, it doesn't need to be read out today.
Okay.
It could be read out a couple times.
Okay, it'll be back on the agenda in the next two weeks for a second reading. 05?
An ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the purchase of motor fuel and for other purposes.
Mayor, would ask that we suspend the rules and place that on a second reading.
Second. On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Second. An ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the purchase of motor fuel and for other purposes.
Mayor, make a motion that we suspend the rules, place it on its third reading.
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the purchase of motor fuel and for other purposes.
A motion in a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion?
Will you explain why we did have to place all these on the second and third reading and try to get it approved?
If I may, 'cause I'm gonna ask City Attorney. Typically, we have done these things in December of the previous year, so January the 1st, the mayor will have the administrative authority to go ahead and handle the business that will occur throughout the year. Some of these items may be January the 2nd, some may not be until October, but we need to go ahead and give the mayor the leeway and department heads to be able to do what they need to do. Similar with fuel.
Right, especially the motor fuel.
That's a daily purchase, maybe once every two weeks, so just to make sure that they have the authority to handle business and the officers won't come in and write us up for handling the transaction without their approval being taken care of.
Thank you.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? City Clerk, can we get a number for that ordinance?
Order is number 2494.
All right, make. An ordinance to waive competitive bidding for economic development services, approving a contract between the city of West Memphis and the West Memphis Chamber of Commerce and for other purposes.
Due to we have approved that contract, do you all want to read it out or what?
For some reason, I think I'm thinking the payment isn't until the end of the first quarter?
That's right, and it's really $20,000, so...
Okay, I think we can just wait, read it next to.
It's been on the agenda in two weeks for a second reading.
Mayor, make a motion we table 07 indefinitely. Indefinitely, yeah.
Motion in a second?
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There's no discussion on the table matter. 08?
An ordinance to waive competitive bidding on professional accounting services and for other purposes.
Frank, again, may I ask?
That amount is $39,000.
Okay, and it's typically done in September?
It normally gets in April, so we'll have time to read it out.
Okay. That'll be back on the agenda in two weeks as well. 09?
An ordinance to create the West Memphis Economic Development Growth Engine Commission. The Edge Commission is a partnership between Economic Development, Planning Development, Advertisement and Promotion Department, Design Review Commission, Chamber of Commerce, Community Resource Services, Business, Property, and Land Owners.
This will be back on the agenda in two weeks for a second reading, and I'll also place together a work session for the council, so we can discuss any needs, possibly adding anything or taking anything out that we made a secret.
Could, Mayor, could Philip Sorrell come up and do a briefing on what this commission is?
Sure, sure.
Yes, I'd be happy to. Basically, this is an idea that was brought forth by Mayor Clinton, and as the title reads, the various organizations that are listed in the title all play a role in economic development. And this organization actually brings us together as an entity to discuss economic development efforts. It provides a level of transparency, it provides input, and it provides accountability from all the various departments as well as stakeholders in the community, because the commission will be made up by five department heads, one council member, and four individuals from the business community, local business community. So it's an opportunity, not only internally, to better communicate around economic development, but also to provide input from the local business community into what we're doing and what those economic development efforts look like. It means to take advantage of some of the momentum that we have going on around here with some of the new development and everything else to help small businesses as well as our efforts to attract large businesses. It's, I think, a good mechanism to put in place, again, and provide some accountability from the city function in the economic development efforts. Any questions beyond that that you all have?
Permission request? I need permission to sign an agreement with Motorola.
So moved.
Second. On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I need permission to sign the request agreement with Waco for the lease of the Parliament Barge.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I also need permission to pay $200 to the Omega Psi Phi fraternity on behalf of former Mayor Johnson, old V O that I'm familiar with.
Yeah.
That one get taken care of.
At a Dollar Trade Fund.
So moved.
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, if I may, did I miss planning commission?
Planning commission, actually, you said that.
Do we need to go back and pick it up?
Oh, yeah. Also, let me get a motion in a second to approve the planning commission recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's good.
Community reports, Public Works.
I'm sorry, Mayor, we have two reports. Please accept my apology for not reporting the January 8th minutes, but they are very, very short. At that particular meeting, elections of officers were held. Councilor Holt nominated Councilor Lorraine Robinson to be the Public Works Chairperson, and Councilor Pulliam seconded that. And basically, the remaining of that report is going to be incorporated into our February 5th commission meeting, which was held this past Tuesday. Some of the new business that was discussed was that we were going to set a public hearing to discuss new sanitation ordinances. The committee plans to invite the landlord association, building association, realtors, and the general public. The plan is to write a new ordinance regarding sanitation, which consolidates all of the other sanitation ordinances and repeal the old ones. Items addressed will be landlord cleanups, you know that, there was a lot of discussion on that that I will not go into at this time for sake of time, litter and debris, tires, garbage, and more. The meeting has been scheduled for March 7th at 6:00 PM at City Hall. If you're interested in any of these discussions and in cleaning up our city and understanding what we need to do, all the ordinances that applies to cleanup, Ms. Gray, the city clerk, has given us ordinances there, and they are all available to the public, but you can attend that meeting on March 7th at 6:00 PM. Also, our recycling report, Ms. Standridge reported that the total for recycling in January was 19,860 pounds. There was one e-waste pickup, and the department disposed of 2,606 tires. Councilor Pulliam mentioned that the city can and will regulate how many tires that businesses are able to stack on their premises using the environmental hazard clause, and we know that sometimes they have so many stacked up around here, there, and everywhere, but we're getting ready to put an end to all of this litter and all of this clutter. So look out, world, here we come. This could be something we can look at as well in the meeting that we're going to have on March 7th. The city engineers report, Ms. Hicks, who's doing a really wonderful job, we discussed the Hino Bridge. The bridge is open to traffic. There's still some permanent striping to be completed and sealing to be done on the wing walls of that bridge. The south loop, we discussed, is 35% of that plant is complete. Excuse me, I'm just getting this running. It was so gracious to mail it to me, there's a lot to read. The preferred route has been selected by the federal government project, by the federal government. Hold on now. The preferred route has been selected by the federal government, project is still under environmental review. Project will be at next year. We're still trying to secure funding so the entire project could be completed at once instead of doing it in stages. The Reading Street, the contractors for Reading Street work is due in February 1st, and work is expected to be completed by May or June. State aid. The city was awarded a state aid grant. The area chosen for the project for the state aid grant is East Barton. We discussed all that. East Barton, this is good news.
Yes.
North 18th Street to Ingram. The good news, the real good news, is that the street, as well as the sidewalks, drainage, all of this will be improved. The project is estimated at $350,000. Sanitation, the sanitation report, there was one damage claim to city property and no workers' comp claim in January. Street Department, there were no damages or workers' comp claim for the street department. The shop, there were no damages or workers' claim comp at the shop. A reconstruction meeting is scheduled for February 12th for the total reconstruction of MLK from Southland to Broadway. This is an R.D.O.T. job. There would be a lot of, I'm sure there'd be a lot of complaints, but once the work is completed, the complainants will be crazy. Councilor Pulliam asked about, Councilor Pulliam asked about, no, I'm gonna skip that. Code Enforcement Officer Mike Antle, he had some, Mike Antle, Officer Antle, asked if the committee wanted him to enforce the, my glasses, the out-of-the-rule, oh, I'm sorry, I got it now. Mike Antle, this is the worst report I've ever written, please forgive me. Officer Antle, he asked if we wanted to enforce the rules for the garbage cans being in sight. They're all out on this sidewalk on the curb, and he asked if we wanted to start enforcing that, and he had an ordinance that we looked at, and we're gonna kind of model that particular ordinance. I had no report for Keep America Beautiful, Keep West Memphis Beautiful, and I'm sorry you all, this is gonna end my report for today.
A and P Commission?
Okay, A and P met on January 24th at 4:00 PM at the Civic Center. Commission received a report from the staff. In December, the Civic Auditorium hosted four events with 1,285 guests and hosted 32 events total for the year and had totaled 13,551 guests in all. The New Jane Wood Civic Center hosted nine events in December and with 815 guests, and overall for the year, we had 99 events totaling 11,243 guests. The commission approved the funding and hosting the Blues Off Broadway, it's a free concert to the public, starting every Thursday in May. The show will be an outdoor show at the Civic Complex, be from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, free. Commission also voted to approve permission to request the bid up, a bid out for the upgrade of the projector screen and video mixer at the auditorium, which need much, you know. The commission also approved the 2019 contract with the Chamber of Commerce as well, contract. That's the end of the report.
Is there one?
Mayor, if I may, if that's all the reports?
Yeah.
I apologize, I failed to ask for an amendment to ordinance 2494 that was passed. The ordinance indicates that the agent is to get at least three bids, and we discussed in pre-council that it's virtually impossible at times, and I'm asking that we amend that to two bids.
That's second.
In discussion? On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have no appointments?
Well, no, but I had one other thing that I would like to bring up, no, it was two things I'd like to bring up, really. One, I mean, I just basically heard the discussion between, I guess, the treasurer and the clerk, finance person and the clerk, but I'm trying, I didn't hear the conversation, but I know we passed out a form, so I would like for a clerk to get an opportunity to explain, you know, I mean, what it's saying to say, you know, with that particular form that you passed out to her. I just heard the basic discussion, but I know we have a form, and I was just wondering where, you know.
To the mayor and the councilman, the reason I gave this memo out to you all in pre-council, because coming, starting my job January the 2nd of 2019, I had found some things that I wasn't approve or signed, checks that I wasn't approve or signing without invoices, like transferring funds from one account, general fund, to another account, there was no invoices, just checks for me to sign. The utility refund for patrons, customers, I get this check, it got a little piece of paper on the back with the name and the account number. That's not an invoice for me to sign. On the jurisdiction with the clerks, with the judge office here, I get a little personal check saying who I'm paying this, signing this check, pay it to a person for job, for hours' work. There is no invoice with this check. So what I did, I created me some check request forms to give to, for you all to approve. I talked to the mayor about this before I did it. So I can have checks and banners with my office, okay? When the state auditor come out, they're gonna look at me, not Frank Martin. So it's time for us to start clarifying what we doing in the finance department, and that's why I created these check requests.
But I was just trying to figure out what it was, 'cause I mean, I just basically heard a little conversation, and I saw the form, and I was just wondering, you know, for it to explain, because any form that we approve, I mean, it's still, you know, I mean, I like for the city attorney, you know, I'm just saying to look at it as well, not saying that what do you want to do is, you know, is not a good thing, but at the same time, you know, I'm just saying for its protocol, and I like to see the attorney, you know, look at it, and, you know, if he recommend whatever, then we come back, you know, because there's nothing wrong with it, you know?
Well, Councilman Puddin, I understand, you know, I've been on council before, and I know the protocol. I wouldn't have created this form if I hadn't have talked to attorney myself, but this is not my city attorney, but I brought it to the mayor first, okay? And on each top of these check requests, it'd have what I'm trying to do, transfer funds, utility bill refund, and judicial fine enhancement. Those are the three that I found, that I have problem with signing without an invoice, and I can use, the city clerk, the city attorney can come in on it and tell me the protocol.
The reason I said that is because, I mean, okay, I didn't know what kind of action that was needed on this today, that's what I'm saying.
I understand.
We approved the form. I just basically heard the conversation, so that's what made me decide to bring it up, because, I mean, when I heard the conversation, and you never see it exactly, I mean, I'm reading what you put on here, but I'm just saying at the same time for...
Well, see, some of you all got up and left out of the meeting, so I couldn't explain it like I wanted to explain it.
This is simply your recommendation to the council for review and vote in two weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
I will say that one error that was stated was that the finance department is responsible for all checks that's written and that we take care of, and we do come under audit, and we have never been, had any supplemental audits under these circumstances whatsoever. But I'll be glad to look at it and discuss it with Ms. Gray and see, to make sure that it doesn't encumber a lot of work on our department that we feel is not necessary because of audit restraints, but I'll be glad to do that.
Well, you know, me, I'm of the opinion, I mean, I'm just saying, whatever's gonna take to protect both of you, I mean, I think that's what needs to be done. I mean, that's just my opinion, you know, so, and that's why, I mean, I just brought it up because, I mean, I saw it, you know, once she gave it to us.
Was it your first time seeing it, Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
It's all y'all's first time seeing it?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Because in the past, no one...
So that's why I said, it was just, well, it's passed out in pre-council, right? That's what I'm saying, that's why I brought it up.
I didn't know, maybe I was missing something.
No, 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 no.
That's why I asked.
And that's why...
Well, she does need something for her record if she's signing checks, she needs something to back her up. The boss does appear, so I agree with her on that.
Well, we agree then.
Well, like I said, we got two weeks to bring it back, you know, and...
Get everyone together, get your mottos off. In appointments, we got a few announcements. I'll start with Councilman McCrone.
Yes, I wanted to announce that Delta Arts here in West Memphis is sponsoring art and soul out at the college today, this afternoon, between 5:00 and 6:30. It's an art showing of local individuals here within the area, and if you want to send a nice, and you can buy these if you want to, but if you want to see a nice art showing, then you need to come out to the Mid-South Community College this afternoon or ASU and see the art. Also, there's a show at the Delta Arts facility, which is the Shetley Center, which is down by the hospital. We've been there for two years now, and that Delta Arts facility is putting on, a young man who I've seen before through a Delta Arts program named Darius Wallace is coming over to portray Frederick Douglass, and that would be a good one. It's February the 24th at 3:30 in the afternoon. Mayor, if I can, can I say one other thing about... Um, Ms., Mayor, if I can, can I, can I say one other thing about an issue that happened before the first of the year?
Sure.
And you took, before you took office? We had a, a situation come up, and, and, uh, Ms. Hudsonson and Ms. Holt and I were talking about it last, last week, or last two weeks ago after the meeting. It had to do with, uh, a pay scale of a assistant fire chief and assistant police chief, and we found out that we weren't paying the same wages that we were supposed to be paying, and I would like for that to be turned over to the appropriate department or the appropriate person to, to look at it and see if, if we're okay there, or if we may have to...
Are you saying that the assistant chief of the fire department is not making the same? We fixed that.
Yeah, we fixed that.
Oh, we did? Oh, when did we fix it?
That voted.
When did we fix it?
Yeah, it was amended in twenty-eighteen.
It was amended.
Carrying forward into the twenty-nineteen budget, so the, the two chiefs and the two assistants will have a, a mirror salary.
It was just the two assistants, that was...
Right.
And, and they all now pay the same.
Yeah.
What about during the period that they, they were supposedly paid the same, and somehow they didn't get...
You're talking about retro money?
Yeah.
That was not addressed.
That was not addressed?
Well, I know that, January the first, we had, uh, two new assistant chiefs, so...
Right.
Both of them started the day one at the same rate.
Okay, well, I'm glad that, that was retrofitted, or not retrofitted, but, uh, that, that was corrected, but then I was thinking about the two that, prior to that, in the previous year, so if you might, wanted to address that.
Talking about backpaying former...
To catch one up, if one of them needed to be caught up.
They're, they're no longer with us.
I stopped my dead side.
Okay, okay.
All right. Mayor, I make a motion to put that subject on the, uh, next agenda to be talked, for further discussion.
Ho, 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 could we, could we just talk that out in the meeting?
Yeah.
Pick up both of the, the former employees not even employed with the city.
Well, that's what I was...
I'll send me a little more detail.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, since we got to that point, then, can I make a motion?
Oh, no, we got a few more others. Come with your horse. Um, I got a few announcements, and then we'll be through, uh, I'll ask my city to please keep our, uh, planning developer Paul Lucker in your prayers and the passing of his fathers today, and, um, we just ask you to keep him in his prayers, but also, we had a community development block grant meeting today, Jim, yeah, can you just come in real quick? Give a few details about this, at five o'clock today, and tell the public...
It's at five?
Yeah, five. Five, it's five-thirty?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
So this is, uh, the second of two required public hearings for our community development block grant program, um, and we're just building on the first one and talking more about allocation of monies and, and what sort of things that we should be focusing on, and getting public input on our ideas and where we want to see the city use this money.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, my last announcement, basically what I want to say first, I want to give the condolences of this council and the mayor in this office to the family of the young man that lost his life last night. Our heart and prayer goes out to him. I also want to commend our police department, who showed a lot of professionalism in a very tense time, and I see our Chief Langston here, and I just want to commend them, and, um, they know that they have the support of this body and this administration, and we just want to keep their family in our prayers and keep our city in our prayers, so we can heal and stop some of this gun violence that's going on in West Memphis.
Mayor, I'd like to speak to Chief West and Chief Langston before they leave.
Okay. Chief West, at there?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chief, I'm sorry. And, and the angels, he got the angels with him.